Good morning. Good morning, everybody. Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting of August 10th, 2021, to order. Excuse me. I don't have a gavel. That's all right. They'll eventually figure it out. Oh, sorry. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I guess I look a little different than the name tag. Yes, so, thank you, everyone. Thank you for your respect and your attention. I call the meeting of August 10th, 2021, of the DuPage County Board to order. May I please ask, Member Sam Tornatore, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? And then please remain standing as we will invocate with our favorite Reverend Andrew Love. Please proceed, Member Tornatore.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, considered a republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to be joined and led by Reverend Andrew Love. As you all know, he is a beloved worker, dedicated public servant here, Adult Protective Services Supervisor with DuPage Community Services. And he also is the Reverend and leader of the Second Baptist Church in Elgin. Reverend Love.
Thank you, Chairman. Let us pray. Dear God in heaven, we thank you for these men and these women. And we ask right now, Lord, for your influence and your guidance in the decisions that they have to make. We thank you so much, Lord, for blessing them with the opportunity, Lord, to serve your people. We ask you now to bless their families, bless their gathering. And, Lord, we just pray it all in your name. Amen.
Amen. All right. That was the best invocation maybe ever, right? Thank you, Reverend Love. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Chaplain.
Here.
Chavez.
Here.
Covert. Desart. DeCiani. Eckoff. Garcia. Hart. Kuduski. LaPlante. Ozog. Lachowski. Rennahan. Rutledge. Shorzy. Selman. Tornatore. Anze. Thank you. We have a quorum. And it's so nice to see everybody here today. And even as we don our masks, we take several steps forward and then we take a step back. But we're moving in the right direction, so thank you very much. On the Order of Chairman's Report, I'd like to invite the League of Women Voters representatives. I see them over here to my right. Mary Hobine, Hannah Benioff, and Heather Miranda to the podium to join me, please. There they come. Wonderful. Thank you very much. Welcome. So the members of the League of Women Voters of Downers Grove, Woodbridge, Lyle are celebrating the 100th anniversary of the group's founding this month. In fact, this chapter of the League is one of the oldest local chapters in Illinois. Therefore, we are joined by Mary Hobine, Hannah Benioff, who has been a member for more than 50 years, and Heather Hathaway Miranda, who is one of the chapter's newest members. There she is. As we read the celebratory proclamation, if I may, please. So, whereas the League of Women Voters of Downers Grove was established on August 9, 1921, with Woodbridge and Lyle joining the chapter in 1976 and 1988 respectively. And whereas residents have benefited from the League's efforts during the past 100 years to register and educate voters and promote citizen participation in democracy through candidate events, programs, and studies. And whereas with the success of these efforts and their tireless work over the last 100 years to strengthen and uphold its mission to empower voters and defend democracy, the League has become a trusted, nonpartisan grassroots organization. And whereas, the League is to be commended for their nonpartisan election information, including sponsorship of candidate forums and information on state and local ballot issues, as well as its commitment to register, educate, and mobilize voters. And whereas, the League champions government systems that are open, transparent, inclusive, and equitable. And whereas, the League believes that active and engaged citizens, irrespective of gender, ethnicity, or political affiliation, are indeed the hallmarks of democracy. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Daniel J. Cronin, Chairman of the DuPage County Board and members of the county board, do hereby honor and congratulate the League of Women Voters of Downers Grove, Woodbridge, and Lyle on its 100th anniversary and commend the League for its significant contribution to empowering voters and making democracy work. I will entertain a motion. All those in favor, say aye. Pose nay. The ayes have it. Congratulations. Thank you for your good work. I'm going to present this to you, very official, looking with a seal on it and everything. And if you'd like to say a few words on behalf of your chapter, please, please. We'd love to hear your words.
Well, I don't know if you can see through the mask, but I'm beaming with pride. A hundred years is a long time. And we've been doing all the things that Chairman Cronin said we were doing. We've held the forums. We've held candidate meet and greets. We've held voter registration drives. We've had legislative interviews. We have done studies on various issues. And we've advocated for those that we've decided through long, long, long study to support. And we didn't let the pandemic stop us.
All right.
We did virtual meetings. There are still virtual things, if you check out the websites of the various DuPage Leagues. We call ourselves the Seven Sisters, because there are seven leagues that are either partially or wholly in DuPage County. And all of them have websites, and you can see what they're doing if you check. You can find links to programs if you want to do it online rather than in person. We're just transitioning back into doing in-person stuff. And we, like you, don't know where that's going to go. But like I said, we didn't let this thing stop us. We took a lead from the Wheaton League on asking candidates to submit five-minute videos to us that we posted on our website, on our YouTube channel, and on the Illinois Voter Guide. And I suspect we will continue doing that even if we start having in-person candidate events. Just little five-minute snippets. And they worked very well. We collected, in this last municipal election, 49. Forty-nine. And we didn't include the uncontested races. So we serve a lot of communities besides the ones in our name. We did a bunch of stuff with Hinsdale and Darien, as well as Downers Grove and Lyle. And anyway, that's what we do. And we're going to keep on doing it. Here's to another 100 years.
On the Order of Chairman's remarks, I have the following to share with you, please. We have a very substantive agenda today, and I will highlight an item or two. But before I do, it's important for me to begin with a word of thanks to our employees. Once again, due to the changing course of the COVID-19 pandemic, we're asking our staff and visitors to wear masks indoors in public areas. I appreciate the cooperation of our elected officials throughout the campus in acting together as one, unified in our commitment to public health. Once again, I find myself encouraging all of our eligible residents, please, 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 get the vaccination. They're free. They're available everywhere. I believe the vaccination is, without a doubt, our way out of this pandemic. Our DuPage County Health Department care van is making stops throughout our communities for daily clinics to serve residents. Please consult your healthcare provider or the health department to answer any questions you may have and find a convenient location offering vaccinations. We can do that for you. On today's agenda, you will again, once again, have the opportunity to assist our small businesses. I think it's really been a hallmark of our service here during the pandemic. And with the first batch of our Reinvest DuPage Business Grant applicants seeking approval. This is an enormously popular program. As we seek to recover from the effects of the pandemic, we will continue to do what we can to assist all of those in need. Finally, today, we recently received news that, once again, DuPage County received a distinguished budget award from the Government Finance Offers Association, GFOA, for all of us in the know. It's the highest form, I'm smiling, the highest form of recognition in government budgeting. It really is a distinction. And the county's budget is reviewed annually by the Government Finance Officers Association to assess how well it meets nationally recognized standards and guidelines. Congratulations to our CFO, Jeff Martinovich, Jennifer Sinn, Mary Catherine Wells, and the entire finance team for their spectacular work. And that concludes my remarks. That concludes the Chairman's report. We move on to the next order of business entitled "Public Comment." And so today, we have a large number of people seeking to offer commentary. And we're going to strictly enforce our rules, please. And the rules are there so that everybody gets a chance to talk and that we conduct our meeting in an orderly fashion, recognizing our obligations under the law and due process and open meetings and welcoming comment from the public. So according to our rules, members of the public shall be afforded time to address the board. Individual remarks, any individual, shall not exceed three minutes in length, nor shall the total time of all the remarks provided, they shall not exceed 30 minutes. And so at the end of the 30 minutes, what time, where's our clock? I forget where that is. We used to have a clock right there. Oh, there it is, yes. It's 10. So at 11 o'clock and 30 minutes from now, we're going to say, "Thank you so much." Whatever remarks remain will still be published. They still will be an important part of the record. We will include them in the minutes. They still will be impactful. And we are duly advised by legal counsel from different levels of the law agencies that that complies and comports with all of our obligations. And I just want to let you know that we will really embrace the remarks that are included in our minutes for those who want to speak after the 30 minutes. So with that, we have, what are you giving me? Okay. We have, first up, Michael Childress is here from the NAACP. Please proceed, Michael.
Thank you, Chairman Cronin. Thank you to the members of the county board. I'm here today representing the NAACP and as a concerned citizen of DuPage County. I always like to begin with the last words of the Pledge of Allegiance. We always talk about liberty and justice for all. Today, the county board is attempting to aid and abet one of the most shameful acts in DuPage County election history. Where do I begin? Former auditor Bob Grogan lost an election by 75 votes. Very competitive, but he still lost. Instead of accepting the will of the people, he began complaining he won, and the election was stolen from him. Now, where have we heard that before? He then began looking for loopholes and technicalities to overturn a free and fair election. He then began a campaign to smear election officials, all in the quest to be reinstalled. In his quest, he is seeking to deny the will of the people. He is seeking to tell over 500 residents their votes dumb counted in DuPage County because an election judge didn't put an initial on a ballot. Well, let's discuss these voters. Every voter was over 18. Every voter was a registered voter. Every voter was a resident of DuPage County. And most importantly, every voter was a United States citizen. Today, six members of the county board seek to disenfranchise these voters. The agenda item brought by these members of the board seek to transfer $300,000 of our money, taxpayers' money, from the general fund to conduct this recount. Now, I agree Mr. Grogan is entitled to exercise his right to have a recount. He is not entitled to throw the bill over the wall to the taxpayers. Illinois requires the petitioners to pay for their own recounts. These six members were elected to be stewards of our tax dollars and not be complicit in voter suppression. They will argue that Illinois's outdated and antiquated laws require these initials. This law is dangerous on its face, because when you think about it, election officials can cherry pick ballots and choose to initial who they want to initial and throw out who they don't. What's next? Bubbles in a soap bar, jelly beans, poll taxes? What's next? You can't take one law and jump up and down about it and say you want it to be enforced and ignore the other law, which says he has to pay for his own recount.
Excuse me, Michael. I don't want to interrupt you, and I really welcome your remarks, but you should know that it's 3 minutes and 30 seconds right now. Please proceed. Please, please, extend it.
I say party, I say community over party. These members are asking the taxpayers to foot the bill. Should be ashamed of themselves and their ability to represent all citizens. All citizens of DuPage County should be called to question now and in future elections. We cannot have short memories. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, Lynn Kadolph, K-A-D-O-L-P-H, from Winfield.
I do not want $300,000 of our hard-earned taxpayer money given to a sore loser, Bob Grogan, so he can find a way to disenfranchise valid votes in an already certified election. The money could be spent in a better way for the county. And Bob Grogan, if he wants to petition, spend his own money if he wants a recount or an audit.
Okay, thank you. Jim Cussy, K-U-S-S-Y, from West Chicago.
Morning. Thank you, Chairman and Board members. Also, I'm just flabbergasted with this Grogan thing. I mean, it's another farce. Now, I know people are told by Trump that if you don't like the election, you should insist on ridiculous recounts, maybe incite a riot, whatever. If you're unhappy, just take the vote. And then intimidate voters along the way. We can't have that, okay? But if he wants to do that, to my knowledge, it's Grogan's right to insist on a recount of some kind. But I'm not paying for it. I'm sorry. You know, I'm paying enough for what happened on January 6. I am not paying for Grogan's recount. If he wants to do it, let him pay for it. It's silly, but, you know, that whole concept is. So that's it. Thank you very much, all of you.
Thank you. Donna Limper, Donna Limper, from Bloomingdale.
DuPage taxpayers should absolutely not have to pay $300,000 of our hard-earned money for an election recount for ex-auditor Bob Grogan. While the recount was court-ordered due to a technical error, the Illinois Election Code clearly states that such plaintiffs, in this case, petitioner Bob Grogan, must deposit any monies required by the court. Even more troubling, the $300,000 expenditure to be transferred from the general fund was not listed on the agenda for the Finance Committee. Rather, the expenditure is being advanced by a resolution by a group of only partisan board members. Should this resolution pass, it would establish a dangerous precedent. Future candidates who lose elections would have grounds to expect that their recount cost would be supported by our taxpayer dollars. I'm left with one question. Why would a group of board members, some of whom are lawyers, propose a transfer of monies contrary to the clear language of the Election Code and bypass Finance Committee protocol? Thank you.
Carol Jean Davis, from Downers Grove.
Good morning. I'm Carol Jean Davis, and I am an election judge from the Downers Grove area. And prior to that, I was an election judge in Lake County. The recount for county auditor is an expensive and deliberate effort to disenfranchise voters. The ballots in question suffer from clerical errors that happen on the watch of election judges of both parties. Votes should not be voided because poorly trained election judges fail to initial ballots. Throwing out uninitial ballots while legal disenfranchises voters, especially in this particular instance. If uninitial ballots are caught before they go into the scanner and while the voter is still present, there is a process to correct that error. However, that can only be done when the voter is present. Once the ballot goes into the scanner, it becomes anonymous, and nothing can be altered. Why there were so many errors in one particular voting site, a whopping 436, I read in the Daily Herald yesterday? I can't answer that. I wasn't there. I was working another nearby election site, doing my best to ensure that judges realize the importance of those blasted initials, because it happens at every single election, at every single site I have ever worked in two counties. There is always at least one judge that forgets, especially early in the morning when we open them. What happened at First Christian Church is shocking in its magnitude. But I assure you that those are valid ballots handled by election judges of both parties and cast by real citizens eligible to vote in DuPage County and who wanted a particular candidate and made their choice clear when they completely darkened the appropriate oval. Their votes matter. They should be respected, counted, and not disenfranchised because of clerical error and legal loophole. It is not the voters' fault that judges didn't take initial ballots as seriously as they should have. That many uninitial ballots from a single election site is a clear case of incompetent election judges, not fraudulent ballots. It definitely warrants an investigation, but one aimed at the election judges at that site, not punishing the voters at that site. Furthermore, taxpayers should not have to fund the costly request to hunt down uninitial ballots, because that's what they're doing, so that more voters can be disenfranchised. The Lake County recount might come out during discussion, with the implication that DuPage's recount is somehow excessive in its cost. The Lake County recount lasted two days and still ran a price tag of $15,000. Last December's partial recount for auditor went on for weeks as the uninitial ballots were painstakingly discovered, one by one. Last, on a positive note, I invite people who aren't candidates or elected officials to sign up to become election judges or poll watchers. The work is hard, but it's well worth it. You become better informed about elections. You see firsthand how hard it is to commit actual voter fraud, and you do a great service to your country and your county. Thank you.
Okay. Lastly, we have Karen Rugg from Itasca.
Three minutes, this is a tough act to follow. I admire their courage to come here and speak. "Justice for all," what does that mean? Mr. Zay, I sent you a FOIA form. I don't know if you got it. I also sent him a FOIA form. I want to know, in January 14th meeting in 2020, you said, "My great-grandfather had water troubles." Which great-grandfather was that? Was it the German great-grandfather? Was it the French great-grandfather? Was it the Irish great-grandfather? Was it the Polish great-grandfather? Was it the Yugoslavian great-grandfather? You know more about me than I know about me. Those ladies were talking about 100 years. We've been there 70 years. You come along and destroy our lives. Which great-grandfather was it? Tell me. Can you tell me right now? I asked, "What neighbors did you talk to? What police did you talk to?" I got no information. You're a liar. You're a liar. You're lying on YouTube on national television, and you lie. I sent you a FOIA on offloading lumber that caused cracks in my foundation in my entire old plaster house, 70-year-old house. I asked you, "Did you do anything about that?" Never got anything back from FOIA. I don't, I'm not a lawyer. They said I was too interrogatory or something. I don't even know what that means. I'm asking you now, what are you doing about that? Dropping loads of lumber around tight houses where houses are being built? People are at work all day long. They don't know when they come home that their foundations have been cracked. If it's panel, they can't see what's going on. I was lucky, I was home. You know, in Surfside, Florida, when that building came down, one of the first things they said, "Well, there was construction going on." And they were supposed to be monitoring the vibrations. What are you doing as a man from Elmhurst, the head of this county, to protect innocent people next to builders? Rich builders that can do what they want, because you let them. I'm done.
Okay, we have, I was mistaken. I missed the sheet, but Joe Fortunato is here to offer some commentary.
Chairman, members of the county board. I addressed you this morning regarding the expenditure of $300,000 to apply to Mr. Grogan's recount. Mr. Grogan certainly has a right to recount. And I'm not going to address the merits of his claim. His claim is currently pending in the Circuit Court for the 18th Judicial Circuit, where it belongs. I find it ironic that the chairman mentioned in his remarks that DuPage County recently received a budgetary award for fiscal responsibility. And here we are, proposing the expenditure of $300,000 of taxpayer money for an expense which is properly the expense of the petitioner under Illinois law, under the Illinois Election Code, as interpreted by case law. That's where it belongs. Mr. Grogan should pay for his own expenses. You've heard other comments in this regard as well, so I won't repeat them. I'll just mention the three Bs that I follow in regard to public speaking. Be on time, be brief, and be gone. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. So I believe that that concludes our in-person public commentary. But I know that we have a significant number of folks who submitted comments online. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Evan. You're the lucky guy. Evan Shields, ladies and gentlemen.
Okay, the first comment is from Jane Kwame, and I apologize if I butcher any of these names. Subject is Criminal Justice Reform Bill. I wholeheartedly support the Criminal Justice Reform Bill. Do not cite process problems to avoid doing the right thing. End of comment. Next comment is from Karen Rugg. The subject is DuPage County Water Issues and Composting, and there is no comment listed. Next comment is from Kevin Hines. Subject is Bob Grogan. Please ensure Bob Grogan has a proper recount. It is a shame the clerk who holds a neutral position is asking for $300,000 to ensure a fair election. This is the same clerk that can't explain how 1,626 more ballots were cast than people voted. That is the end of that comment. Next comment is from Steve Peterson. Subject is Grogan Recount. Bob Grogan's campaign bore the cost of confirming there were errors in the election system. Now we know that the system had issues. It is the responsibility of the county, the voters, and in turn taxpayers to both review the results of the last election and ensure this doesn't happen again moving forward. It is the county's duty to hold and confirm fair elections. When that doesn't happen, the county needs to pay the cost to remediate. The candidate has taken the necessary steps and incurred the cost to get to this point. The county now needs to step up and show voters that they take election integrity seriously and pay to recount and remediate moving forward. This is not a party issue. Thank you. That is the end of that comment. Next comment is from Donna Limper. Subject is Resolution to Pay $300,000 for Auditor Recount. I support the Daily Herald's description of ex-DuPage County- I support the Daily Herald's description of ex-DuPage County auditor Bob Grogan's contested election recount as a "costly charade." DuPage taxpayers should not have to pay $300,000 of our hard-earned money just because 436 ballots in a Downers Grove Township polling place were not initialed. Moreover, an election judge's initials were recorded on an electronic poll pad at the time ballots were given to voters. The Illinois Election Code clearly states that the plaintiff, petitioner Bob Grogan, must deposit any monies required by the court, and there's a citation here. More troubling, the $300,000 expenditure is not listed on the agenda for the Finance Committee that meets before the board meeting on August 10th. Rather, the expenditure is being advanced through a resolution by six board members. Should this resolution pass, it would establish a dangerous precedent. Future candidates who lose would expect that their recount costs could be supported by our tax dollars should they also petition for a countywide recount. I am deeply concerned that Don Pachalski and Sam Tornatori, my District 1 county representatives who put forth this illegal resolution, think using my tax dollars this way is appropriate. That is the end of that comment. Next one is from Chris Bennett with the subject County Auditor Recount. I read in the article linked below that county clerk Gene Kazmeric is asking a judge to rule that the candidate Bob Grogan should pay for a court-ordered recount of the county auditor election. This seems counterproductive and looks like DuPage County is shirking its duties. DuPage should pay for the recount and get it done quickly. This election was almost 10 months ago. Please get moving on this. And there's a link to a DuPage, or a Daily Herald story at the bottom. That is the end of that comment. The next comment is from Tonya Corey with the subject Bob Grogan Election. It is the responsibility of DuPage County to correctly and accurately count the ballots of an election. It is entirely appropriate that if a judge finds mistakes were made with that count, the government should pay for the second count, too. That is the end of that comment. Next comment is from Karen Rugge. It says DuPage Water Issues and Composting, and there is no subject matter in the comment. Same with the next comment. Next comment is from Bill Connolly. Subject, Bob Grogan Auditor Recount. I ask that the county pay for the recount and to get moving on it quickly. The election was over 10 months ago. Our government needs to support elections, especially when contested regardless of party affiliation. Kindly fund this recount. That is the end of that comment. Next is from Bruce Hanson. Subject, Grogan Recount. I am in favor of the county government paying for the recount of Bob Grogan's race. It is the responsibility of DuPage County to correctly and accurately count the ballots of an election. It is entirely appropriate that if a judge finds mistakes were made with that count, the government should pay for the second count, too. That is the end of that comment. Next comment is from Matthew Carlyle. Subject, DuPage County Government Should Fund Auditor Recount Costs. I am in favor of DuPage County paying for the recount of Bob Grogan's race. It is the responsibility of DuPage County to correctly and accurately count the ballots of an election. It is entirely appropriate that if a judge finds mistakes were made with that count, the county government should pay for the second count, too. That is the end of that comment. Next is from Aron Rao. Subject, In Support of Bob Grogan's Race. I am in favor of the government paying for the recount of Bob Grogan's race. It is the responsibility of DuPage County to correctly and accurately count the ballots of an election. It is entirely appropriate that if a judge finds mistakes were made with that count, the government should pay for the second count, too. That is the end of that comment. Next comment is from Chris Jack. Subject, Cost for Recount of Auditor's Race. Comment reads, "DuPage County should not charge candidates for the cost of a recount of the April auditor's race. There are clear grounds for recount, and the county needs to investigate these." That is the end of that comment. Next is from Bruce Bockelman. Subject, Recount for DuPage County Auditor Bob Grogan. I am in favor of the government paying for the recount of the DuPage County auditor election from November 2020 and not Bob Grogan. It is the responsibility of DuPage County to correctly and accurately count the ballots of an election. It is entirely appropriate that if a candidate and/or judge finds mistakes were made with that count, the government should pay for the recount or second count. That is the end of that comment. Next comes from Kent Walbrook. Subject, Recount for DuPage County Auditor Bob Grogan. I am strongly in favor of the government paying for the recount of DuPage County auditor election from November 2020 and not Bob Grogan. It is the responsibility of DuPage County to correctly and accurately count the ballots of an election. It is entirely appropriate that if a candidate and/or judge finds mistakes with that count, the government should pay for the recount or second count. That is the end of that comment. Next comment comes from Linda Elsick. The subject is CBR 379-21. The above resolution has to be one of the most embarrassing documents brought to the county board for a vote. As a taxpayer, I do not want my taxes paying for Bob Grogan's ballot recount, with a citation. This citation states that the petitioner is the petitioner who must deposit the money required by the court. The board has no right circumventing this law. The board is the defendant in the lawsuit brought by Grogan, and paying for the recount, it also becomes the plaintiff. Does the board want to play both sides? This is totally ridiculous. The board is also opening a can of worms if it decides it wants to pay for this recount. Anyone in the future can demand a recount if the voting is close, and they are the losers. And finally, you will potentially be disenfranchising voters in precincts cherry-picked by the plaintiff whose votes have counted in the election of other officials. I don't understand how those ballots can be good for one candidate and not good for another. It's the same ballot. Thought behind this resolution scares me because it reeks of authoritarianism and lacks the knowledge of laws of this state and county, and yet, these are our elected officials. That's what scares me. If Mr. Grogan wants to petition for a recount, let him put down his money, not the taxpayers of this county, and let him pay for a full recount, not just cherry-picked precincts. County board members, grow up. That is the end of that comment. Next comment is from Carol Landau about Resolution CBR 379-21. I'm writing to express my strong objection to a resolution which we voted on at the DuPage County Board Meeting tomorrow. In fact, I find it hard to believe that such a resolution got any board members to sign up. Are the signers trying to emulate the shenanigans of Maricopa County and paying for the contesting of a local election? I respect the right of Mr. Grogan to contest such a close election, but for the county to pay for this action violates the election code and appears to be partisan in nature. Code clearly states that the plaintiff must deposit monies required by the court. Please see the code verbiage here, and it has a state citation. The petitioner shall deposit, or shall cause to be deposited, such amounts of money as the court may require as security for costs for such additional precincts as the court may deem reasonable and proper. The county clearly would not be following the law by assuming the cost for the plaintiff. At least four of the signers to the resolution are lawyers. Are they not bound to follow the law? Additionally, DuPage County is named as the defendant in the suit filed by plaintiff Bob Grogan. In what universe does it make sense to use county tax dollars to pay for both sides of the lawsuit? While I support Mr. Grogan's right to contest such a closer election, regardless of which party he represents, tax dollars should not be used for such a purpose, especially when that action violates Illinois Election Code. As a DuPage County resident and taxpayer, I find it inappropriate and unacceptable that tax dollars be considered to pay for an action that violates the election code, and I urge you to vote against it at the county board meeting on 8/10/2021. That concludes that comment. Next is from Dennis Popier Nick. Comment, Recount for DuPage County Auditor Bob Grogan. I am in favor of the government paying for the recount of DuPage County auditor election from November 2020 and not Bob Grogan. It is the responsibility of DuPage County to correctly and accurately count the ballots of an election. It is entirely appropriate that if a candidate and/or judge finds mistakes were made with that count, the government should pay for the recount or second count. That concludes that comment. Next comment is from Paul Santucci. Subject, County Election Recount. Clerk, I am in favor of the county government paying for the recount of the DuPage County auditor election from November 2020 and not one of the candidates. It is the responsibility of DuPage County to correctly and accurately count the ballots of the election. It is entirely appropriate that if a candidate and/or judge finds mistakes were made with that count, that agency in charge of the election count should pay for the recount and second count, especially if the court ordered to do so. That is the end of that comment. Next comment comes from Linda Lunt. Subject, CBR 379-21 Payment for Election Recount Costs. I urge the board to vote no to Resolution CBR 379-21 Payment for Election Recount Costs. If adopted, this resolution would set a dangerous precedent which would allow anyone contesting an election to ask the board to pay for it. Any recount assumes errors on the part of someone so using established errors as the reason for payment is not justified. If the recount ends in victory for the petitioner, he will be refunded his money. Therefore, he is not in danger of having to accept these costs of any errors made. If, however, the recount does not go in his favor, taxpayers should not have to pay for the recount. There is already legal procedure in place for recounts. The board should not make an exception in this case. Thank you, Linda Lunt, Elmhurst, Illinois. That concludes that comment. Next comment is from Liz Bockelman. Subject, Recount for DuPage County Auditor Bob Grogan. I am in favor of the government paying for any and all questioned or contested November 3rd, 2020 election results in the state of Illinois, including and specifically for the recount of the DuPage County auditor race. Bob Grogan is not the owner of this question slash problem. The issue is owned by the voters of Illinois. We pay taxes to the government we elected to be used for this kind of basic requirement of governing. Corrupt election results make for corrupt government and disenfranchise every voter in this state. Intolerable. A fair, honest government welcomes the burden of accountability to the people. It is therefore the duty, responsibility, and top priority of DuPage County as a governing, tax-collecting body, elected by and accountable to the people, to pay for any process necessary to correctly and accurately counting the 11/3/2020 votes of the people of DuPage County Auditor. Additionally, I demand that the county broaden any and all recounts and audits for any other race on the ballot should the recount and/or audits of the votes for DuPage County Auditor reveal any other races that may have been affected by similar fraud. The county must be ready to pay for any and all additional cost burden of these as well. The county government should be extremely eager to account the results proving they ran a fair election. If they think it costs too much to do so, they aren't running elections correctly. Should have done it right the first time. That ends that comment. Next comment is from Roger Brown. Subject, Recount of Auditor's Election. And it reads, "This must be publicly funded. Ample evidence exists of a fraud." That is the end of that comment. Next comment is from Joanne Tyree. Subject, Proposal for County Taxpayers to Cover Costs of Grogan Recount. As a taxpayer in Cook County, I strongly oppose the proposal that the county taxpayers should bear the cost of Grogan's requested recount for the auditor's race. State law is clear, the candidate requesting the recount is responsible for the cost unless a court ruling contested election decides differently. This is purely partisan move by Republican county board members, and it's decidedly not a valid use of $300,000 of my taxes nor my neighbor's taxes. That is the end of that comment. This is from Kathy AL9. Subject, Recount. Please do not use public funds for recount for county auditor. This election has been certified. That ends that comment. Next is from Mary Blanchard. Subject, Reject Recount. Do not use taxpayer dollars to fund a recount. This is an egregious use of our money, and any board members that votes for this is negligent. That is the end of that comment. Next comment is from Sandra Alexander. Subject is Use of Taxpayer Dollars for Recount Effort. As a taxpayer in DuPage County, I am opposed to the idea of taxpayer dollars being used to fund the recount effort of former auditor Bob Grogan. The election was already certified by the county clerk, and Illinois law requires that petitioners fund their own recount. In my opinion, this is a waste of taxpayer dollars. I urge the members of the DuPage County Board to reject a proposal to transfer up to $300,000 from the general fund to the county clerk for this effort. That concludes that comment. Next comment is from E. Kadera. Subject is No Money for Recount of Already Certified Election Results. Comment reads, "No money for recount of already certified election results." Full stop. That is the end of that comment. Next comment comes from Sadia Zakaria. Subject, Do Not Use Taxpayer Money for Bob Grogan Recount. Do not misuse taxpayer dollars to fund a recount for Bob Grogan's failed election. The election was certified, and Bob Grogan must pay for the recount out of his own pocket. That is the end of that comment. Next comment is from Jeffrey Carr. Subject, Auditor Recount. Good afternoon. In the matter of the recount in the election for DuPage County Auditor, I ask the board to vote in favor of the government paying for the recount as opposed to having Bob Grogan pay for it. Thank you for your consideration, Jeffrey Carr. That is the end of that comment. Next comment comes from Diane Neesman. Sorry. Subject, Resolution to Pay for Grogan's Recount. The resolution to use taxpayer funds to pay for recount must not pass. Taxpayer funds should not be used to challenge election results. If Grogan wants a recount, let him ask the Republican Party of DuPage County to pay for it. It would set a dangerous precedent for future elections. That concludes that comment.
Okay, excuse me, Evan. So that's 30 minutes now, and we really appreciate all the folks that have submitted their comments. The remaining comments will be included in the minutes, correct, Mr. Clerk? Yes. So thank you very much for all those that had some strong opinions and views, and maybe not so strong, just some observations about this matter and other matters as well. Thank you. That concludes our public comment. Now we move on to the Order of Business entitled Consent. Is there a motion?
No, moved.
There's a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
DeSart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye.
Heckoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachalski.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Anze.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. On to the Order of County Board. Member Ashley Selman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to move to combine and approve items A through G. These are appointments.
There's a motion to combine items A through G and a second. Let's see. Is there any objection? No objection. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it. Please proceed. The items are combined. Forgive me.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So then I move CBR 0366-21. It's the appointment of Melinda M. Finch, Public Member to the Board of Health. CBR 0370-21, Appointment of Paula Deacon Garcia, County Board Member to the Board of Health. CBR 0367-21, Appointment of Sam Tornatori, County Board Member to the Board of Health. CBR 368-21, Appointment of Eric Trow to the Naperville Fire Protection District. CBR 369-21, Appointment of Mary Argusa to the Salt Creek Sanitation District. And lastly, CBR 373-21, Appointment of Robert Taglia to the Salt Creek Sanitary District.
Okay. There's been a motion and a second. Thank you for the explanation and the motion to adopt. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
DeSart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye.
Heckoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachalski.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
And Schworzy.
Aye.
Okay, the resolution is adapted. Member Selman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If it's all right with you, I'll yield to Member Zay to present this last item. Yes. Thank you.
So, Member Selman defers to Member Zay to present this last item. Member Zay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on CBR 379-21, Resolution Payment of Election Recount Costs.
There's been a motion and a second.
Is there any discussion? Member Selman.[1558.41]
I do have a record of not voting for some of these longstanding appointments and because our county is experiencing a crisis in affordable housing, I think that new ideas and fresh board members on these type of boards will help alleviate those problems and for that reason I would be a no on this reappointment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Krajewski.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I want to be supporting John Hakeem. Oh, did it? Sorry. I'm going to be supporting John Hakeem here. He's done a great job with, you know, Paul Haas will tell you, he's done a great job on the board. He immigrated here in the United States in 1977 from India. He's got a very impressive resume. I can only support who you put forward, so this is the candidate. He's definitely qualified. He's the only minority that sits on that board right now and I'd read his resume, it's very impressive on what he's accomplished, both in India and here in the United States. So I definitely will be supporting him today for the reappointment. Thank you. And he's from my district.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion? Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Mr. Clark, please call the roll. Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
DeSart.
Aye.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Heckoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski, Rennahan, Rutledge.
Aye.
And Schworzy.
Aye.
Okay, the resolution is adapted. Member Selman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If it's all right with you, I'll yield to Member Zay to present this last item.
Yes. So, Member Selman defers to Member Zay to present this last item. Member Zay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on CBR 379-21, resolution payment of election recount costs.
There's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Member Selman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank everyone who made their comments today, both on and off. I really only have knowledge about this situation from the papers, so I have two questions I'd like to ask, one for the clerk's office and one for the state's attorney's office. For the clerk's office, can you just clarify this? These dollars were not requested by the clerk's office, is that correct? I think our deputy clerk will answer that.
That is correct.
Okay. And then for the state's attorney, and probably this might be a question for Connor, it's just procedural. Generally, when this board is asked for funding related to a court case, are we not usually given an executive session so we can hear details about what we're being asked to allocate?
I actually don't know the answer to that because typically this isn't coming from a settlement or from a case involving litigation involving the county. This is from a statutory action involving a recount. The clerk's only involved because they're an election authority, they're the ones with the ballots, they're the ones that run the election.
Okay.
So this is one of those things where it's not exactly a case where, like a slip and fall or a different item, so.
Okay, so it's just a little outside of that normal structure. I'm clear, no vote on this. I think we have to respect our clerk. If she had asked for this funding, we would be happy to debate that. It was not requested of her. It seems pretty clear from the statute, I'm not an attorney, but it seems pretty clear that the person responsible for bringing the recount is who pays those funds. I've never been in that situation, but that's what the law is. So it will be a no vote and I encourage my colleagues to do the same.
Further discussion? Member Ozog was seeking recognition followed by Member Zay, followed by, I'm going to write this down, Zay and Chaplin and DeCiani and Krajewski and Hart and Mr. Schworzy back there wants to speak on this issue and Member Garcia. Okay, we've got a nice lineup. All right, Member Ozog.
Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I'd like to defer to Mr. Hart and then speak after him.
I don't know. Okay.
I'm willing to take the time, but I know there were a number of folks ahead of me, so.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead. Member Hart. Yeah. She wants to learn from some of your wisdom, I suppose.
Okay, or rebut it, but one of the two.
Right, yeah, right, right.
I'll stand for this. You know, first and foremost, the one thing I want to put on record and I think it's something that all of us agree with, at least I would hope, is that the 2020 election, both at the top, all the way down to the bottom, was a free and fair election. Casting any doubt on our process here in DuPage County is something I don't agree with and that's why I did remove my name from the resolution yesterday. I originally signed on because I did see the $300,000 amount and had some questions about how that was generated. I believe former auditor Grogan has every right to pursue his challenge in court and that's what he's doing. I also believe that an individual shouldn't be going broke to pursue that right. So I had questions about the $300,000 and I was hoping that would come to a discussion today, which I'm glad that it did. But yesterday, a judge in DuPage County Court ruled that Mr. Grogan does not have to pay $300,000, he only has to pay $56,000, which is still a sizable amount, but the burden of proof is always on the petitioner. And that afterthought is why I removed my name, it's why I'm going to be voting no on this resolution today and I hope that all of us understand the legal boundaries with which we have to operate. So I appreciate the opportunity to talk and I'll defer to my colleagues for a future discussion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Member Hart, Member Ozog.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I don't know. We're after her.
Thank you, everyone, for being here from our public. Back in the 70s, I was a high school student in a wonderful Catholic high school and one of the lessons, life lessons they drilled into us was that we had freedom with responsibility. Our biggest responsibility as elected officials is to uphold our constitution and to uphold our laws. Today, seven, well, six now, board members have used their freedom irresponsibly. This resolution was a cynical attempt to circumvent state of Illinois statute and have taxpayers pay for Mr. Grogan's recount. It was also an attempt to follow the lead of Mr. Trump, Mr. Giuliani, and the Pillow Guy to question the integrity of our DuPage County election system and our duly elected clerk, who has spent most of the last decade and a half as a watchdog, trying to guard our election system in DuPage County. There is one encouraging development this morning. I congratulate Mr. Hart for removing his name from this terrible effort. As the youngest member of your caucus, I hope that you will follow the lead of my former professor at the University of Michigan, Gerald R. Ford. Follow the lead of John McCain. These were upstanding men who knew how to work across the aisle. Use your freedom wisely. Stop calling your opposition radical Democrats. Stop claiming, for instance, in my own case, that I don't support law enforcement. I'm a Navy mom. When one person serves, the entire person, the entire family serves. Stick to your record and the facts. So I hope, Mr. Hart, that you've learned from examining your conscience in this effort and I certainly will be voting no against this cynical effort to bring what we've experienced for the last nine months into DuPage County elections. Thank you.
Uh, Member Zay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm pretty sure we all want fair and transparent elections here in DuPage County. We've erased it in a 75 vote difference out of hundreds of thousands of votes. One candidate has gone through the proper steps set up by law to do a recount. Errors were made and with the possible errors, a judge ordered a full recount, which could change the outcome of the election. These points are indisputable. No one is saying anyone tried to steal an election. We think no one did this on purpose. Mistakes happen. They happen to everyone. What I'm saying is when it comes to elections, we need to go above and beyond to make sure that people's votes are collected properly, that the right person won the election. This resolution is saying the county board wants to ensure the clerk has enough money to do the recount ordered by the judge. It was the clerk in court filings that asked for $289,560.55. Now I think the clerk does not have that amount in her budget. This resolution has nothing to do with Mr. Grogan's responsibility. A judge ordered a written notice basically calling this race a tie and the chances of prevailing are 50/50. Mr. Grogan still has to come up with the security bond of $56,000 for the recount to continue. These circumstances are unique and do not have any presidential value. Other counties have recently taken positions and paid for recounts. Macon County did so and overturned a sheriff's race. And I'm surprised by some of my colleagues here. September 25th, 2018, Member LaPlante, when running for chairman, called out Chairman Cronin about the blunders of the election commission and said we need integrity in our elections. October 23rd, 2018, Clerk Casmeric, when running for that office, called on the county board. It's demonstrated that the board members have the ability to make the decision with the act initiative to have accountable and transparent elections. Do we not, as a board, want to give the clerks the means to assure we do the recount right here in DuPage County? Just this morning, the board approved a $100,000 change order, budget transfer, to the clerk's office to pay for legal for the recount. We did. The judge said, "The supervision and administration of electoral recounts falls squarely at the county clerk's job," description, which means to the extent that her employees will be working on the recount. This recount's going to go forward if Mr. Grogan puts it there. What my colleagues are saying is we want to make sure they have the money there to do this. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I move to amend our resolution to the amount of $56,307.25, which was ruled by the judge, which Mr. Grogan has to come up with half as his security bond and the other half has to be paid by who? DuPage County, us, because that is the clerk's job to do recounts.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to amend the resolution that's before us right now, to amend it on its face. There's a motion and a second, I think, Mr. Of course. So, yeah, there's a proposal, they're ready to print it, it's been printed and it can be distributed, so it appears to comport with our requirements, so we'll take a roll call on the motion to amend. You want to speak to the motion to amend, Member Ozog? You probably want to talk about the issue after the amendment issue is resolved, right?
No, Mr. Chairman, I would like to point out, let me speak, please. I would like to point out that this was not requested by the clerk, that is the usual way.
We have a motion and a second to amend.
And there's been no review through the Finance Committee.
Okay, I understand. This is what happens in a setting like this.
What happens when? When we don't follow our rules?
No, no, we're trying to follow the rules. There's only one person now that's causing a problem.
Well, then why didn't the clerk ask for this and why isn't it gone through Finance?
We have a motion and a second on the floor right now to amend the $300,000 amount to a lesser sum, okay? And so there's been a motion and a second. I'm going to call on the clerk to call the roll and you'll have an opportunity to vote yes or no and then we can move on to further debate, okay?
Can we discuss the motion?
Mr., I'll entertain discussion on the motion. Yes, sir. Mr. Krajewski, you want to speak to the motion to, the amendment that Mr. Zay has proposed? Okay, Mr. Krajewski.
Correct.
On the motion and the second, the effort to amend the resolution.
Right, understood.
I'll call on you, Member Ozog, if that's what you want to speak to.
I would like to speak after that.
Okay, I'm sure you do.
I'll speak later, I'm going to speak on this amendment to the motion.
This is just to this amendment right now.
Yeah, I got some other stuff.
All we're going to address, I'm going to try to restrict it to that and only that, please.
Thanks, Chairman. I got some other stuff I'd like to speak to, but just with Mr. Zay. Because of, again, the court ruling that, I had questions on the $300,000, the court ruled that a number of those costs that the clerk is incurring, he didn't buy it, I guess, but he said that the actual cost that the clerk would incur is $112,614.50. That was the court ruling last night, so that's what he said it would cost. He did say that, I guess, petitioner Grogan would only have to come up with half of that, so is it the $100? We're asking for the $56,000 that's outside of what Grogan's asking for. The judge ruled that he should only have to pay for half because it's right now, he would have a seven vote lead, but who knows on the recount and it's a 50/50 chance, so the money that we're asking for in this resolution is the $56,000 change that would be what the judge ordered the clerk would have to pay for. Mr. Grogan has to pay for $56,000 for the other half. Is that correct? Okay. So this is not for what auditor Grogan is asking for, for the cost that he's been ordered by the judge to have to pay, this is what the judge ordered we would have to pay, just to make sure.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Krajewski. To the amendment, Member Ozog.
To the amendment, you're still asking us to do the same thing. You are asking us.
No, the issue's changed a little bit. We're talking about the amount of money. That's the only issue, that narrow issue that has been reduced. So now if you want to say something about that, how they arrived at, the judge, any of those kinds of ideas, that's what I'll entertain. Then after we address this effort to amend the resolution, then we can go to discussion on the underlying resolution as amended or not amended.
That's fine, I understand what you're saying. However, the court yesterday told Mr. Grogan that he will bear the $56,000 expense. So you're now asking us to allocate the other $56,000 for the clerk's office.
I'm not asking you to do anything, I'm just trying to follow the rules here and preside over the meeting. Mr. Zay is the one that made the motion.
Mr. Zay is asking us to do this.
Okay, thank you.
But I want to point out to you that, and I've been on this board for two and a half years and another board for eight years, these kind of department requests come from the department, they come from the elected official. The clerk has had nothing to do with this and these expenses have not been made yet, so in time, if the clerk needs the money, then she will request the money of this board through the regular channels. And those regular channels include the Finance Committee. This request needed to come from the clerk and go through the Finance Committee. If the clerk needs the money to perform the operation the judge has said yesterday, that is the proper way to do this. I will be voting against this amendment and this is really just wrong that this is happening. Thank you.
Okay. Further discussion on the amendment, Member Tornatori, followed by Member DeCiani.
Well, Mr. Chairman, this is on the amendment, but this is also going to go to the crux of the issue because if the amendment doesn't pass, then a lot of what I think we're talking about becomes irrelevant. So I'm going to go forward and if I'm out of line, you can go ahead and.
Well, if the amendment fails, they'll have a chance to speak again, so try to observe the procedure here, Member Tornatori.
Here's the situation, Mr. Chairman. I put my name on this original resolution to have it brought before us to discuss what I think's a very important issue, which many of us have been unaware of. Did I think it would be controversial? Yes, especially when my wife said, "Why are you talking about this?" But when I explained to her what I thought my reasons were, I think I brought her around. Did I think it was going to become as incendiary as it's become? Did I think I was going to be called irresponsible, cynical, be compared to Donald Trump, talk about justice for all, loopholes and technicalities, voter suppression, January 6th, illegal votes, poll tax? All of this has nothing to do with the issue at hand. We're talking here about 75 votes out of 491,061 cast. I like Bill White. I like Bob Grogan. Quite frankly, I don't care who the auditor is. This isn't about who the auditor is, it's about getting a fair and open honest election, which is what all of us wanted and expected when we ran for this job that we're in right now. And yes, I am a lawyer and yes, I care about justice and fairness. And you know what? When something is illegal and a judge says it's invalid, in my mind, that means it's invalid. The same way that a judge may have to turn off someone accused of a heinous crime because the police didn't do what they were supposed to do, if it's an invalid arrest, it's invalid. That's the law. That's how I've been living my life for the past 40 years. Sorry if I can't change that. I'm looking for a fair result. We're looking to transfer funds to be able to ensure that we can move forward. The clerk originally asked for almost $300,000. Judge Belford cut that down to $112,614.50 and I have a copy of his order, which was entered yesterday. But just briefly, a little bit of history, May 12th, 2021, the judge said, in the original case that was brought before him, "In construing the election provision, the Illinois Supreme Court has been both explicit and resolute for more than a century. Statutes requiring election judges to initial ballots are mandatory. Uninitial ballots may not be counted." This isn't about fairness, this isn't about technicalities, this is about the Supreme Court. The petitioner's motion for a full recount is granted and the court hereby orders that a countywide recount of the November 3rd, 2020 election for the office of DuPage County Auditor be conducted in accordance with the procedures set forth in the agreed recount order and precinct ballots that is not initial shall be deemed effective and not counted. Now, it wasn't Bob Grogan who said that, it wasn't Gene Casmeric that said that, it wasn't the Election Commission that said that, it was the judge that said that. Now, unless an appellate court judge says something different, those votes are invalid. Those were 82 votes that he deemed invalid, enough to sway the election. Yesterday, Judge Belford entered another order and part of his language stated, "The Court's paramount obligation is to ensure that a true and accurate result of the election is ascertained. Hosting of a security should never stand as an obstacle to the accomplishment of this task." The election is effectively a tie. I quote the judge, "The election is effectively a tie. There's an equal chance of either being elected. Both parties have a 50/50 chance of winning." Now, we're not even asking us to acknowledge that we should pay for Bob Grogan, but, you know, who's been paying for auditor White up until now? We have, the taxpayers. There's been such a human cry about taxpayer money being used to pay for Bob Grogan, but the taxpayers have been paying for this entire situation since the beginning. Is Bob Grogan entitled to a fair and honest recount as ordered by Judge Belford? Absolutely. Does he run the risk of maybe some of his ballots being discounted because maybe the ballots for which he was elected didn't have it initialed? Absolutely. You know, I just don't think that it's fair to categorize any of us who happen to want to bring this forward, to talk about this, as being cynical, tyrannical, whatever other word you want to use because it happens to be a partisan issue. Yeah, you're right. There was only Republicans who signed on it. And too bad. Too bad that I can't, some of my Democratic colleagues can't agree that maybe a fair and free election is good and possibly Bob Grogan ought to have his day in court. And now that he's had his day in court and the judge has said those ballots don't count, maybe we should have a recount, and money shouldn't stand in the way. It's our job. It's our job to see what the clerk does who oversees the Election Commission to make sure we have free and fair elections. And that's what this resolution is about. Nothing more, nothing less. If Mr. White is the victor, or Mr. Grogan is the victor, quite frankly, they're going to do their job. They're going to sit in their office, and they're going to go over what we do, and I'm sure they'll both do a fine job. But at the end of the day, this is something that needs to go forward. We need to ensure that this recount goes forward, and money shouldn't be an issue.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to go back to the order that we had established, and I remember Chaplin was seeking recognition, followed by Member De Ciani, followed by Member Schwarz, Schwarzy, followed by Garcia, De Sart, and Renahan. How do you like that? Please proceed.
I'm not sure what we're talking about, but since everybody's just talking about-
I understand. So let's just address the subject matter generally. We'll go to the amendment, and then I suspect that we'll go right to the resolution after that. And maybe there won't be as much discussion at that point. But if there is, then we'll entertain that at that time as well. Please proceed.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman. On the day we have recognized the Downers Grove League of Women Voters, the seven, and I'm calling them seven because seven board members wanted to disenfranchise hundreds of DuPage County voters who cast ballots in person on Election Day 2020 at the First Christian Church polling place in Downers Grove. I don't know why anyone signed on to this resolution. And I'm going to explain why. Because if it's not troubling enough that my Republican colleagues want to disenfranchise voters, think about this. This resolution that we're asked to vote on today is factually inaccurate. Factually, and we had board members, committee, county board members that signed on to a factually inaccurate resolution that now want to step away from it. And if that's not troubling enough, the Republicans are now trying to pass this off as a simple budget transfer from the general fund to a department that has not even requested any additional funding. If this was a truly, a true budget transfer, why did they need to use inflammatory and accusatory language and not simply put a request in the normal budget transfer way and make this a budget transfer from the general fund to the clerk's office for the reelection? They went, used this resolution to question the integrity of our elections and question the integrity of our county clerk after this election was certified. And I will tell you that there were members from the state's attorney's office, or we had legal, in that room when this election was certified. So what I, what the Republicans have done today is tried to disenfranchise hundreds of voters of this county. They, like I said, they've attempted to cast doubt in the electoral process and question the integrity of our local election and our clerk. And let me be clear, Judge Belford has never, not once, mentioned fraud or corruption in our local election process. I don't know who thought it was a good idea to, and who advised or approved a sloppy resolution that called our election results alleged. That is a certified election, and they are using the words allegedly. The language of the resolution is troubling and concerning. So I'm asking, and I believe it is very important, that this board receives an accurate, a detailed explanation of how this factually inaccurate, misleading, and egregious resolution was passed on, was put on today's agenda. Today's actions by my Republican members, I'm sorry, they were irresponsible, inappropriate, dishonest, and dangerous, as we have seen the scenario played out across the country, leading to threats of violence against election officials and an insurrection on our Capitol. I am very sad about what has happened today and this resolution being brought forward. Thank you.
Member De Ciani.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I am not backing away from anything here. I'm one of the six, originally seven, that signed on to this resolution, and I agree 100% with the amendment. As a judge, has obviously looked at this and said this amount that the clerk would like to charge, almost 300,000 was excessive, and reduced it down to 112,000. So I think the amendment is appropriate. I think the initial request that we put through before this judge made the ruling was appropriate. We need to get down to the bottom of this. An election that was determined by a 75 votes. During the discovery process, the DuPage County Circuit Judge determines that a full recount is warranted based on evidence submitted. Evidence like vote-by-mail ballots that were postmarked after Election Day being counted. Evidence like judges not signing off from both parties on ballots overseen by a watchdog, our clerk. Where was she watching? Where is our clerk today? Our clerk has been absent since she's been elected. She doesn't come to meetings. She doesn't, I don't get this. She's the highest-paid elected official of this county, and she does not show up unless she asks for money. So we're giving her the money to make sure that this is fair, given the evidence of postmarked ballots that were postmarked after Election Day, and this is in the court case, and ballots that were not signed off by both judges. If there was a Democrat in this situation, I would be on this resolution. At the end of the day, we need to know who won the race, and it's got to be fair. So if the Democrats are in this position, I would sign them the same resolution because it's about fairness. Lake County, in a recount, charged 15,000, a county of 700,000 people. What's fair? 20,000? But our clerk charged almost 300,000. And a judge, thankfully, stepped in and said, "This is crazy. There's a recount going on in Cook County right now in the sub-circuit. The clerk wants to charge 680,000 because a Republican actually challenges a Democrat there." And does not want to actually do a full discovery because they know they're probably going to lose. So what's the problem? Why does it have to be excessive? There's no race until next June. These people are working in the clerk's office doing nothing, okay? At the end of the day, why is this? There's no elections going on until next year. So to tell me that 300,000 is not excessive, or 680,000 in Cook County is not excessive is beyond me as an elected official. She could even donate part of her salary. She makes almost 170,000 plus a car allowance and help out with this. But at the end of the day, it's our responsibility to make sure that this is right. I fully support the amendment, reducing the cost down because the judge obviously saw this was a problem as well, too. And it's important that we get to the bottom of this. Oh, by the way, Mr. Grogan never declared a victory. So I know Mr. Childress, who I respect, never declared a victory. He just wants his due diligence. He's done his diligence. He's shown in discovery that there's evidence. The judge initially said full discovery, and now the judge is saying reduce the cost so it's affordable. And we're trying to help. And this is probably the first time this has ever happened in our county. And other counties have stepped in and said, "No cost." So at the end of the day, let's see who actually won the race. And if it's Mr. White, God bless. We celebrate. If it's Mr. Grogan, we celebrate. So, thank you.
Greg Schwarzy, Member Schwarzy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple comments. With all due respect, when Member Tornatori was speaking, I just want to point out that even if this resolution doesn't pass, a recount can still happen. It's just the money's not coming from the county. So just want to make sure that that's clear. Again, with due respect to Mr. De Ciani, I think our clerk's office has an open-door policy. I've never been turned away anytime I have any questions. Ms. Casmerick's always very welcoming, as well as her deputy clerk, and our deputy clerk does show up for every meeting. So anytime questions are answered, he can answer on behalf. And then just something that was mentioned in the public comment, which raised a big red flag with me, is I think it was Mr. Childress mentioned that, and I'm not typically cynical, so I hope this would never happen, but what if, what if a precedent is set where somebody comes in and you have an election judge who may be far right or far left, sees somebody that they know that votes the other way, and all of a sudden they choose not to initial this ballot? And then we're running into the same sort of thing, and now intentional fraud is being committed. So I'm going to vote no for this resolution, but I just wanted to make those comments. Thank you.
Member Garcia, followed by Member De Sart.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I am, I am just going to sit here. First of all, the first word that caught my eye when I was reading this resolution was allegedly. That is a horrible word to use in any kind of election. It's wrong. And that's all I'm going to say about that. I think Member Chaplin actually said it much better than I could. But I also want to support the workers that are in the clerk's office. I was going to say this before Member De Ciani said anything, but it's a hard, there's a lot of work to do with the clerk's office. And all of a sudden, now the judge yesterday says, you know, "Well, we're going to only, you know, charge so much for a recount." That's on top of all the other work that they're actually doing. And on top of that, I have to give kudos to the election judges who actually came out in the middle of a pandemic to do the work when we were actually doing Zoom meetings, or the board, I wasn't on it yet, was doing Zoom meetings because it wasn't safe to be out. And so quite honestly, you know, here we are sitting here fighting over a human mistake that was made, which could be probably solved in a million different ways than how it's being done now in this lengthy, lengthy process. And we are not giving credit to those people who work so hard every day to make sure that we do have fair elections, which we absolutely do in DuPage County. And I want to thank the clerk's office for that. And that's it.
Member De Sart.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that whether we're talking about the $300,000 or the $56,307.25, I'm just, I'm curious by nature, and I'm just curious about the motivation that we're being told this is not political. But what is the motivation, then, for seven members of this board, people outside of the clerk's office, to come forth and request the money? So I mean, I want to dial down the temperature a little bit, but I do want to point out that, you know, we try to follow our rules and regulations here on the board. And this is from the DuPage County Ethics Ordinance. Subpart C, prohibited political activity. Section 2-477, prohibited political activity defined. Prohibited political activity means, and again, these are the DuPage County Board ethics, under M, it says participating in any recount or challenge to the outcome of any election. So that tells me that even voting on this resolution is a participation, especially since the clerk did not request this money. The seven members of this board are requesting the money, so they are wanting to participate in the recount or challenge of the outcome of an election. So I think for their own ethical protection, this resolution should be thrown out on its face. It's not ethical per our own rules. Thank you.
Member Renahan.
Hey. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'm trying to stick to the rules here and talk to the amendment, speak to the amendment first.
Well, you have latitude here because it seems like it's very difficult to confine people's remarks. So I'm giving latitude. I'm going to call Member Ozog back again. I tried to conduct the debate in an orderly fashion, but I welcome, and we welcome, the latitude. So please proceed.
All right. Well, I'll just start by saying, you know, thanks to everyone for their comments on the public comment. It is instrumental to our democracy. I appreciate it. But you know what? Even if we change the amount to a dollar, I couldn't support it because the legislature has already spoken on this topic. There is a law, the onus is on the petitioner to pay for a recount, and there is a mechanism for reimbursement. If he were to win, there would be a mechanism for reimbursement. So for us to put this, you know, to even have this conversation is improper. It's a question of timing. So, and we did have a fair and open election. And to say otherwise, that is what's incendiary. That is what's upsetting. And to pile on our elected official is really disgraceful.
Okay. Member Ekof, followed by Member Ozog. We'll go back, and Member Tornatori was seeking recognition again, so we'll do, everybody get a chance to speak once, and Member Ekof, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess the first thing I'd like to say is, isn't it great that we live in a country where we're debating this here and that out on the street with guns and knives? I would also like to note that this isn't a situation where judges have thrown out court cases, and people are yelling and screaming that the judge's ruling is invalid or improper or shouldn't be followed, or the election was stolen. What this is, is a court case where the judge found that 75 votes shouldn't have been counted. And the judge took a great deal of time. He wrote a very lengthy opinion. And before I get to that, let me remind people that Mr. Grogan's already paid about $40,000 to get to this point, to do the partial recount. That's not, that's not, he's not asking to be reimbursed for that. We're not going to reimburse him for that. But because he got that far, the judge ruled in his opinion yesterday, and I'll quote it, "The election authority is being called upon to double-check its own work because there is good cause to believe that a mistake was made the first time around. The recount results solely from Mr. Grogan's discovery of a material error in how the county clerk tallied the votes the first time around." That's what the judge said. That's not what I said or anybody else here. That's what the judge found after reviewed everything. A lot different than all those other court cases that have been referred to where the judge threw the case out of court. The judge kept it in court. So whose mistake is it? It's the county's mistake. It's our mistake. We work with the county clerk, and the mistake was made, and she didn't do it herself. Somebody down at the election facility did it, and I don't know who it was. We heard from the one person who spoke that it happens all the time. We heard from Mr. Tornatori that if it happens, the ballot is illegal. That's pursuant to the Illinois Supreme Court. I don't particularly like that. I wish there was a different remedy, but that's not it. And that's, so that's what we have to follow. So the person who's saying, who's disenfranchising the voter, isn't us. It's the people who mismark those ballots. Because now what's happening is you are being asked to go ahead and accept the results of an election where the wrong person may have won because votes that were cast and should not have been counted were counted. But you're saying you're willing to go along with that? I'm not. There's also been a question about, "Oh, this was already certified, so it's past time." If that was the case, the judge would have thrown the case out of court a long time ago. Mr. Grogan's got a right to bring this lawsuit. He's brought the lawsuit, and he's prevailed till now. There's talk about this being political activity. Mr. Zay sided to, a number of counties have already dealt with that, with these type of issues. It's unfortunate that we get to this point, but it's also unfortunate when we start throwing language around that accuses various people of being something less than honest. I think this procedure needs to go forward, and I think maybe we can all speak in one voice and ask the Illinois Legislature to change the law so that you don't have to have such an egregious result when somebody doesn't initial a ballot. But that's what's happened. That's what the law is, and we have to follow the law. And one other thing, and I quote again from the opinion of the judge, because there's been a lot of debate about who pays and who doesn't pay. Says finally, section 23-23 provides that in such cases as this, "The court may, from time to time, upon the court's own motion or upon the application of the election authority or of any party to said cause, require the parties to the cause, or any of them, to deposit such amounts of money that will, with the court, as security for costs, as a court may deem reasonable and proper." So I would hope that at some point the court decides that the county should be the only one depositing the money. But until that happens, I think we've got a right to step forward and pay some of these costs.
Member Ozog.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I am not a lawyer. I've been married to a lawyer for 36 years. But I'm going to point out that this is a lawsuit against both the clerk and thus the county. So I don't believe that any of this should be discussed except in executive session. So I don't know why we're here today discussing this issue in the first place. But I'm also going to point out that the main issue here is that my Republican colleagues are trying to supersede the clerk and her responsibility to handle her own budget. It is the clerk's responsibility to ask us for funds should she incur an expense through this recount that is above the budget that she has for fiscal year 2021. That's her job. Her job is to pay this expense, not ours, until we're asked. So what has happened here today, and I'm sorry, just read the original resolution, change the amount, do whatever you like, but this is an effort to supersede the clerk's elected official ability to manage her own budget and also to inject doubt into our election system and also to make the taxpayer, that's me, that's you, I've been living here for 35 years this month, to make us pay. And originally, the thought was that we would be paying the entire $300,000, which would include Mr. Grogan's bond. I'm going to say one final thing in terms of Mr. Grogan and his expenses. This is his choice to do this, okay? And if my Republican colleagues are that concerned about Mr. Grogan's ability to pay, I'm going to point out that between the chairman and the seven of you, I believe you have about three-quarter of a million dollars in your election funds. So if you want to help Mr. Grogan, please be my guest. But this is not an issue that we should even- But this is not an issue that we should even be talking about. You let the clerk do her job, you let her ask for her budget as our rules call for. This is completely out of line today. The clerk will handle her budget, she will handle her responsibilities. But what has happened here today is a complete effort to override election integrity in DuPage County, and we should not even be discussing it because I believe it's also an executive session discussion for ongoing litigation. Thank you.
Okay. Member Tornatore. And then we'll come back to Member Chaplin as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I don't know where to begin. I'm sorry it goes to this. I generally don't like to get into this, and up until now, I really respected most of all my colleagues here, but I'm losing it today. Don't call me unethical. Don't tell me I'm casting doubt. Don't tell me I don't have the integrity to, to make a decision, to bring something forward. I challenge you, Liz, to show me one factual inaccuracy in this original resolution. You may not like the word allegedly, but when a judge says that 82 ballots aren't to be counted and somebody loses by 75, that turns it into allegedly. Everything else in here is factually correct. I have nothing but respect for the clerk. She does her job. But she also asked for $300,000, which the judge reduced by two-thirds. So there's, there's something here, you know, to call this shameful? You don't like it? You think it's partisan? That's fine. Is it shameful? You wanted an executive session? I would have been happy to have this discussion in an executive session. Our state's attorney said we didn't need to do it. We're going to journey go to executive session today. I'll stay here all night if you want to discuss the relative merits of what Judge Belford said, which was that 82 of these ballots don't count. Therefore, it putting this election in question. And that's what we're talking about here. I, I think the hyperbole has gone far enough. I'd like to continue to respect my colleagues, both Republican and Democrat, but if we're going to continue down this road, then I don't know that we're ever going to get anywhere on this board, at least until the next election. I'm terribly disappointed.
Thank you.
Okay. Member Chaplin.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Cronin. So first, a couple of things. Nobody here is denying that Mr. Grogan is, has a right to a recount. We all agree to that. But this resolution, you guys are, you are trying to say it's not political and that it is factually accurate. I will tell you, this paragraph, whereas Judge Belford also found that this error, along with other possible errors such as late or improper vote-by-mail ballots, could change the outcome of the election and therefore ordered a full recount. I would like the state's attorney to confirm that that is an inaccurate paragraph in that resolution. As I was told last night, you would do it.
Were, were you going to let me actually answer?
Yes. Yes, go ahead. Go ahead.
The inclusion of the language, along with other possible errors and the part about mail-order ballots, does not appear in any of Judge Belford's rulings.
Thank you very much. Therefore, this is a misleading and dishonest resolution that was brought forward to cast doubt, create, incite people? I don't know. Like I said, if you, like you, Sam, I too am losing respect for my members, my colleagues that I really, really like on this board. I too, when I saw this resolution, it's a pers, it's an attack on the integrity of our election. It's an attack on our county clerk who has, I know she has reached out to every one of you, invited you to her office, invited you to go to a warehouse, and none of you have taken her up on it. And you know why she's not here? Because she's down in her office doing work where she is every Tuesday. I would ask the same. Where's the state's attorney, Bob Berlin? Why isn't he sitting there? Why isn't Jim Mendrick here half the time during meetings? Because our elected officials have important work to do. Not that taking minutes is not important, I mean no slight, but they are busy doing the work of an elected official. So again, I know you're trying to backside this and say that it was nothing but a simple budget transfer, but the language in this resolution is contradictory to that. And that is where you all need to be held responsible. And the fact that this resolution is inaccurate and factual and insightful, I think we should just pull it and not even vote on it and just be done with it and not bring it back, not even give it any legitimacy.
Okay. I think, uh, Member Amy Chavez was seeking recognition.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know a lot has been said. I think we've been elected to do the work of the people of DuPage County, so I think we've gotten severely off track with that today. This is not how our time should be spent. I think it's wholly inappropriate that we are speaking to the merits of a case that's currently open within our court system and we're, we're offering up opinions of sort. And for me, that's, I'm just really uncomfortable with that. I think, I just want to get back to the fact that if the clerk needs money or she's asking for a budget item, I'd like to see that put through the proper channels, through committee, come to finance, and come to county board. I think this circumvented the entire process, and that is my primary disappointment today, and I will be a no on any version of this resolution.
Member Rutledge.
Thank you, Chairman. We've been at this for a while now. Our public comment gave us quite a bit of information or opinions on this issue. And I'm calling the question.
Okay. I think, I think your timing is pretty good. Uh, well, no, we haven't, yeah, we have to, yeah, we have to close on the amendment, and we do have Member Covert. I'd like to let Member Covert offer a remark, so, or any member who was seeking recognition and like to offer that professional courtesy. Please proceed, Member Covert.
Thank you, Chairman. I, I mean, everybody spoke to, I don't even know if it's really necessary for me to make comments, but I do want to let everybody know my reasoning of voting no on this resolution today. Um, you know, there's been a lot of, I think we've gone really off track into judgments on people and just back and forth. I, I just want to bring this back on why I struggled with this. And I did read the court order, and I highly respect Judge Belford. He is an extremely competent judge, and I, I respect his court order and judgment on this case. But when I looked at the order, the order didn't specifically state that the county board needs to pay for the expenses. It just says that, you know, it states how much the cost will be, which is about $53,000 or so, but it doesn't order for us to pay for it. So just on that basis alone, I'm going to be voting no on it.
Okay. Thank you. So now, Members A to close on the amendment. Are you seeking recognition, Member Kudjuski?
After that, because I, some of this other stuff I had questions on, I can speak at a future time when we got the clerk in front of us, but just want to say that I'm not disenfranchising any voters, and we have a court order here to do the recount, and this, I'm just reading this opinion, which I would suggest everybody just read what the judge said, but basically the judge said that the, the results are going to change, who knows which way, but he said, on the contrary, given both, that Mr. Grogan has identified a genuine vulnerability in the certified election results accuracy, and that both parties presently enjoy a 50% chance of prevailing. This court is convinced that the proper amount, and he goes into how much it's going to cost that the petitioner is going to have to pay, but he's basically already ruled, you know, based on Illinois Supreme Court law, that there are some votes that are going to change. So don't know what the results are going to be till after the full recount, and I think, you know, everybody would like to see a fair and accurate election. I don't know what that's going to be, but this is a court now. This isn't everybody throwing out rhetoric and stuff. This is a court that's doing the ruling, so we're basically talking about what the judge said.
Okay. All right. Member Desart.
Thank you. Member Kudjuski, with all due respect, everything you just said is irrelevant because it's, it's not our job. It's the clerk's job then to request the money for a recount. We're just saying it's not our job. So, so while you think you made good points, it's completely irrelevant because it's the clerk's job to ask. Thank you.
Okay. Members A to close on the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I, I hope we can tune this down a little bit, and there's some answers that I'd like to respond to. Um, you know, what I'm hearing today is that we need to follow the law and that Mr. Grogan needs to pay for it. But on the other hand, we don't want to follow the law that a judge filed and said, this recount's here, that we have to go ahead with this recount, that we're trying to steal the election, that we're trying to do other things, that people are calling our integrity into question. Can't have the hypocrisy of, let's follow one law, but let's not follow a judge's ruling. Can't have both. My colleagues, why didn't this come? Because I think our chairman of finance just said, just pull it and not vote on it. We've gone that path before. Our members have gone that path before, and we've had our resolutions tabled without having a chance to vote on it. So you wonder why we brought it to county board. That's the reason, and you qualified it for us. We talk about partisanship. We've asked for debates on issues, and we haven't gotten it. So this is our only, in the minority, this is our only way to go forward. We think this is important. We think fair elections are important. A judge has ordered a recount. It's indisputable. He said there were errors. I haven't taken any shots at the clerk. Errors were made. We all make errors. God knows I've made errors in my life. But this is, has to go to the integrity and the transparency of our election. When a judge ruled yesterday it's a 50-50 chance, I really don't care. You and I want to care? I want this election to be over. We got elections coming up. It'd be nice to have this put to bed in whatever, how many weeks it's going to take, get this done with before we start the next election cycle, so people know. We've talked about machines that are bad. The clerk's going to get new machines. Hopefully, we won't have these problems in the future. But let's finish this election. The court has ruled. Let's give them the money that they need to do this. So my colleagues, when the clerk comes for a budget transfer, two weeks, a month for it, not, maybe not. Maybe she has the money in her budget. I don't know. But I want to guarantee that we can do this recount, get it done, do it properly, and let's have all the votes counted. Let's pick somebody. I don't care either. Mr. White seems to be very confident that the months he's been here. Mr. Grogan was confident when he was here. Auditor, doesn't have a huge budget here at this county, but I'd like for the integrity of an election to know that if a judge says you can't use this, and that's state law, and the Supreme Court has ruled on that, then we have to do that. So that's all we're asking is for this amount to make sure that the clerk has the tools to do this. Thank you.
We have, uh, Member Zay has concluded his remarks on the amendment. Uh, I believe there has been a motion and a second. Am I correct, Mr. Clerk? On the amendment. So would you please, Mr. Clerk, call the roll on the amendment? Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
No.
Chavez.
No.
Covert.
No.
Desart.
Sure.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Ekoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
No.
Hart.
No.
Kudjuski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
No.
Ozog.
No.
Pachowski, Renahan.
No.
Rutledge.
No.
Schworzy.
No.
Selman.
No.
And Tornatori. Six voting aye, eleven voting nay. Six voting aye, eleven voting nay. The amendment fails. Mr. Zay, on the resolution, are you making a motion? Do adopt?
Motion's already been made, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. There's been a motion on the, on the original resolution. So there's been a motion and a second on the end of X, right, Mr. Clerk? Okay. Let's take a roll call on that underlying resolution. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Zay.
No.
Chaplin.
No.
Chavez.
No.
Covert.
No.
Desart.
No.
DeCiani.
No.
Ekoff.
No.
Garcia.
No.
Hart.
No.
Kudjuski.
No.
LaPlante.
No.
Ozog.
No.
Pachowski, Renahan.
No.
Rutledge.
No.
Schworzy.
No.
Selman.
No.
And Tornatori.
No.
Okey-dokey. There are none voting aye, seventeen voting nay. The resolution fails. Thank you very much. We move on to the next order of business entitled Finance. Member Liz Chaplin.
Thank you, Chairman. So I would like to move to combined items A through K. They are all acceptance and appropriations.
There's been a motion to combine A through K in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close nay. The ayes have it. The items are combined. Please proceed, Member Chaplin.
Thank you, Chairman. I move to approve FIR 034721, Acceptance and Appropriation of Additional Funding and Extension of Time for Vari, uh, for the Victims of Crime Act Child Advocacy Center Services Program Grant in the Amount of $25,158. I move to approve FIR 034821, Acceptance and Appropriation of the Adult Re-Deploy Illinois Program, Intergovernmental Agreement, $349,131. I move on FIR 034921, Acceptance and Appropriation of the Donated Funds Initiative Program Grant in the Amount of $103,119. I move on FIR 035021, Acceptance and Appropriation of the Violent Crime Victims Assistant Program, I move on Acceptance, FIR 035321, Acceptance and Appropriation of the Tobacco Enforcement Program, $4,400. Move on FIR 036421, Acceptance and Appropriation of the Center for Tech and Civic Life, $513,156. I move on FIR 036521, Acceptance and Appropriation of the Health America Vote Act, $149,000. I move on FIR 035721, Acceptance and Appropriation of the Illinois Department of Human Services Emergency Solutions Grant in the Amount of $396,223. I move on FIR 035821, Acceptance and Appropriation of the Illinois Home Weatherization Assistance Program in the Amount of $661,653. I move on FIR 035921, Acceptance and Appropriation of the Illinois Home Weatherization Assistance Program, $882,548. And FIR 03621, Acceptance and Or, and Appropriation of Additional Funding for the Low-Income Home Energy Assistance Program in the Amount of $2,216,090.
Been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Ekoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Kudjuski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski, Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
No.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
And Zay.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Uh, Member Chaplin.
Thank you, Chairman. I move on FIR 03621, Acceptance and Extension of the Community Block, Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Program, um, from September, uh, through September 30th, 2023. Oh, did I miss L? FIR, I move on FIR 035121, Acceptance of the Illinois Law Enforcement Training Standard Board Law Enforcement Camera Grant, $142,720.
Been a motion and a second, Mr. Clerk? Please call the roll. There's a request. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Chaplin?
Aye.
Chavez?
Aye.
Covert?
Aye.
Desart?
Aye.
Diciani?
Aye.
Eckoff?
Aye.
Garcia?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Krajewski?
Aye.
LaPlante?
No.
Ozog?
No.
Pachowski?
No.
Renahan?
No.
Rutledge?
No.
Schworzy?
No.
Selman?
No.
Tornatori?
No.
And Zay?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Member Chaplin?
Thank you, Chairman. I move on FIR 036021, Acceptance of an Extension of the Community Block Grant Disaster Recovery Extended through September 30th, 2023.
Leave is granted. Member Chaplin?
I move on FIR 037421, Approval of Issuance of Payments to Small Businesses and Independent Contractors through the Reinvested Page Small Grant Program in the Amount of $2,504,373.
Leave is granted. Member Chaplin?
I move on FIR 0378-
I'm sorry, excuse me, pardon me. Aw, I'm sorry. What happened?
He just came back in.
Aw, I missed you, Pete. Yes, okay.
So we're back on end?
Okay, please proceed, Member Chaplin.
Okay, so I was just approving FIR 037821, Approval of the Issuance of-
That was already approved.
Oh, that was already approved, all right. Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't know that we had to, all right. I move on FIR 035721, Revision to the Personnel Budget. Oh, there was a motion and a second? Wait, okay.
Because Pete wasn't here.
Okay. Well, I started that one. I was going on, Owen, you all stopped me. Okay, it's all right. I move on FIR 037821, Approval-
Now, we got to do 374.
I wonder, did we do that already? We did that one already. So are we going back?
Yeah, we have to go back. We can't do it because he wasn't physically present, so we have to go back, 374.
I'm sorry, okay.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you. All right, that is clear now. So I'm going to go back to-
We already did the vote, right? So he loops back the vote.
No, but we did, uh-
Wait, can we, wait, excuse me, excuse me. Can we please hear from our State's Attorney and give us some direction here?
Mr. Diciani changed the number of persons present for the vote. You cannot adopt a roll call that does not have him present there because the minutes are required to reflect by vote who's present at the time of the approval of the items. Therefore, you need to redo item N, which, for the record, is FIR 037421, Approval of an Issuance of Payment to Small Businesses and Independent Contractors in the Amount of $2,504,373.
Thank you. Okay, so I will, all right, so we have, do we have, we have a motion and a second on this one? Okay.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Chaplin?
Aye.
Chavez?
Aye.
Covert?
Aye.
Desart?
Aye.
Diciani?
Aye.
Eckoff?
Aye.
Garcia?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Krajewski?
Aye.
LaPlante?
No.
Ozog?
No.
Pachowski?
No.
Renahan?
No.
Rutledge?
No.
Schworzy?
No.
Selman?
No.
Tornatori?
No.
And Zay?
Aye.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Member Chaplin?
Thank you, Chairman Cronin. I move on FIR 037821, Approval of Issuance of Payments to Small Business and Independent Contractors through the Reinvested Page Small Business Grant Program in the Amount of $1,850,837.
Leave is granted. Member Chaplin?
Thank you. I move on FIR 037621, Placing Name on Payrolls. Payroll.
Leave is granted.
Thank you. I move on FIR 037721, Budget Transfers from 8/10/2021 to Various Companies and Accounting Units.
Leave is granted. Member Chaplin?
Thank you. I move on Authorization for Overnight Travel. Approval is requested for the Chairman of the Board of Review to attend the Illinois Property Assessment Institute's Homestead Exemption Course from September 12th through 17th, 2021.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Member Chaplin, a fine report.
Thank you.
So I, this is kind of dangerous, but I've had a couple of requests. People want to visit the facilities and get a drink of water. Let's take five minutes, please, five minutes, and we'll be right back here. Wickedly split, please. So, yes, a recess, recess, recess. Hopefully, we had a chance to gain some comfort, rest, maybe a little water and coffee, but then, you know what, then, you know, may not help the situation if we don't move quickly. Yeah, so it's all good. So, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll, so we make sure everybody's here when we resume from our recess. Chaplin?
Here.
Chavez?
Here.
Covert?
Here.
Desart?
Here.
Diciani?
Here.
Eckoff?
Here.
Garcia?
Here.
Hart?
Here.
Krajewski?
Here.
LaPlante?
Here.
Ozog?
Here.
Pachowski?
No.
Renahan?
No.
Rutledge?
No.
Schworzy?
No.
Selman?
No.
Tornatori?
No.
And Zay?
Okay, great.
We have a quorum. Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. We move on to the next order of business entitled Ad Hoc Fine Arts. Member Lynn LaPlante?
Thank you so much, Chairman. I entertain a motion to approve FA-R-0354-21, Approval of Gate Ticketing Fee Schedule for the 2021 Fine Arts Festival.
Second.
Ta-da. There's a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Yep, that adds up. There we go. LaPlante?
Aye.
Ozog?
No.
Pachowski?
No.
Renahan?
No.
Rutledge?
No.
Schworzy?
No.
Selman?
No.
Tornatori?
No.
Zay?
Aye.
Chaplin?
No.
Chavez?
Aye.
Covert?
Aye.
Desart?
Aye.
Diciani?
Aye.
Eckoff?
Aye.
Garcia?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Krajewski?
Aye.
LaPlante?
No.
Ozog?
No.
Pachowski?
No.
Renahan?
No.
Rutledge?
No.
Schworzy?
No.
And Selman?
No.
Tornatori?
No.
And Zay?
Aye.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Member Chaplin?
Thank you, Chairman Cronin. I move on FIR 037821, Approval of Issuance of Payments to Small Business and Independent Contractors through the Reinvested Page Small Business Grant Program in the Amount of $1,850,837.
Leave is granted.
Thank you.
Member Chaplin?
Thank you.
Been a motion and a second, Mr. Clerk? Please call the roll. Yes, a recess, recess, recess. Please. Hopefully, we had a chance to gain some comfort, rest, maybe a little water and coffee, but then, you know what, then, you know, may not help the situation if we don't move quickly. Yeah, so it's all good. So, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll, so we make sure everybody's here when we resume from our recess. Chaplin?
Here.
Chavez?
Here.
Covert?
Here.
Desart?
Here.
Diciani?
Here.
Eckoff?
Here.
Garcia?
Here.
Hart?
Here.
Krajewski?
Here.
LaPlante?
No.
Ozog?
No.
Pachowski?
No.
Renahan?
No.
Rutledge?
No.
Schworzy?
No.
Selman?
No.
Tornatori?
No.
And Zay?
Aye.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Member Selman?
Thank you.
One more item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One last item. I move approval of JPSO-5821, Amendment to Resolution, JPSP-2120, Issued to Level 3 Financing, Providing Telecommunication Service for Disaster Recovery, Cloud Backup, October 1st, 2020 through September 30th, 2024, Increasing the Incumbents by $54,690, 2072 to the Circuit Court.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Member Selman, a fine report. On to the order of Public Works, Member Ozog.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to move to approve PWR-035521, Resolution, DuPage River-Salt Creek Work Group Membership Dues for 2021 to 2022 are in the Amount of $279,825, to be cost shared in the Amount of $34,147.68, to be paid by Stormwater Management, and $245,677.32, to be paid by Public Works. Public Works dues include a special condition fee for MPGES permits per IEPA, or slash EPA.
There's been a motion and a second, Mr. Clerk? Please call the roll. Ozog?
Yes.
Pachowski?
No.
Renahan?
No.
Rutledge?
No.
Schworzy?
No.
And LaPlante?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Member Ozog?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I next move for approval of PWP-032821, Recommendation for the Approval of a Contract to Weatherproofing Technologies Incorporated for Roof Restoration at Various Public Works Facilities for the Period August 10th, 2021 through June 1st, 2022, for a Total Contract Amount not to exceed $250,648.51, Contract pursuant to the Intergovernmental Cooperation Act, Omni Partners.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Member Ozog, a fine report. On to the order of Stormwater, Member Jim Zay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move on SMR-35221, Recommendation for Approval to Grant Authority to the Stormwater Management Department for Providing Limited Services on Privately-Owned Drainage Systems and Structures.
Second.
Been a motion and a second, Mr. Clerk?
Onto the Order of Health and Human Services, Member Renahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, I move approval of H H S R three-sixty-two twenty-one, approval of issuance of payments due page counting to energy assistance providers for light heat, one million one hundred and seventy-six thousand eighty-two dollars for community services.
And a motion and a second, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge. Shorzy. Salmon. Tornatori. Zay. Chaplin. Chavez.
Aye.
Covert. Desart. Diciani. Eckhoff. Garcia. Hart. Kudjuski. LaPlante. Ozog. And Pachowski. Thank you, Mr. Clerk, Member Renahan.
I move approval of H H S R three-sixty-three twenty-one, recommendation for approval of transfer of ownership and assumption of home investment partnership program requirements agreement between Myers Common Senior Housing and Myers Common Harmony Housing, Project H M four dash oh-five, Myers Common Senior Housing.
Leave is granted, Member Renahan.
I move approval of H H S P three-twenty-six twenty-one, approval of contract with Lakeshore Dairy for fluid dairy for the care center and campus areas, uh, September first, twenty-twenty-one, through August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two, not to exceed eighty thousand.
Leave is granted, Member Renahan.
I move approval of H H S P three-three twenty-nine twenty-one, ratification of emergency procurement to Alpha Baking Co. for breads, rolls, and buns for the care center and campus, August fifth, twenty-twenty-one, through August fourth, twenty-twenty-two, not to exceed fifty thousand six hundred and eighty-nine dollars and eight cents.
Leave is granted, Member Renahan.
I move approval of twenty dash twenty-one dash six-four-seven, H H S P one oh-five A dash twenty-one, Amendment to Resolution issued to Med search staffing, D B A United Pharmacy for supplemental staffing for the pharmacy department of the care center, May fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one, through May thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two, increasing incumbents by seventy-five thousand dollars.
Leave is granted, Member Renahan.
Um, I have two travel requests, the first, uh, move approval of twenty-twenty-one-six-forty-nine, weatherization assessment to Q C I training in champagne, August twenty-three, twenty-twenty-one to August twenty-six, twenty-twenty-one, seven hundred ninety-two dollars and fifty cents.
Leave.
Okay, thank you.
Leave, wait a minute, leave is granted, please proceed.
I move approval of twenty dash twenty-one-six-fifty, also, uh, champagne, Q C I training, August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one to August twenty-six, twenty-twenty-one, for a program coordinator, weatherization, seven hundred ninety-two dollars and fifty cents.
Leave is granted, Member Renahan. That's it, a fine report, really good. Onto the Order of Judicial Public Safety, Member Renahan.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I move to combine items fourteen A through K, these are all enabling ordinances agreements as a share for traffic control.
And a motion and a second to combine these items, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay, the ayes have it, the items are combined, please proceed.
I move approval of J P S O fifty-eight twenty-one with Woods of Hobson Green Condo Association, J P S O fifty-nine twenty-one with Waterfall Glen Condo Association, J P S O sixty dash twenty-one, Court of Education Glenbar Township High School, Glenbar High School, Glenbar South High School, I'm sorry, uh, J P S O sixty-one dash twenty-one, Statford Green Condo Association, J P S O sixty-two twenty-one, Oakbrook Colony Condo Association, J P S O sixty-three twenty-one, Hinsdale Point Condo Association, J P S O sixty-four twenty-one, Hinsdale Lake Terrace Avenue Realty, J P S O sixty-five twenty-one, Coralex Condo Association, J P S O sixty-six twenty-one, Shambor Property Owners Association, J P S O sixty-seven twenty-one, Brandi Wine Town Host Improvement Association, and J P S O sixty-eight twenty-one, Burrage School District, E N M James School.
Leave is granted. Mayor, we can't do that, I'm sorry, ay, 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 sorry about that, Mr. Clerk, there's been a motion and a second, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge. Shorzy. Salmon. Tornatori. Zay. Chaplin. Chavez. Covert. Desart. Diciani. Eckhoff. Garcia. Hart. Kudjuski. LaPlante. Ozog. And Pachowski. Thank you, Mr. Clerk, Member Renahan. One more item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I have one last item, I move approval of J P S C O four-ninety-seven twenty-one, Amendment to Resolution, J P S P two-twelve twenty, issued to Level Three Financing, Providing Telecommunications Services for Disaster Recovery, Cloud Backup, October first, twenty-twenty, through September thirty, twenty-twenty-four, increasing the incumbents by fifty-four thousand six hundred and ninety dollars, twenty seventy-two cents, for the Circuit Court.
Leave is granted, thank you, Member Renahan, a fine report. Onto the Order of Public Works, Member, uh, Ozog.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, today I'd like to move to approve P W R zero-three-five-five twenty-one, Resolution DuPage River Salt Creek Work Group Membership Dues for twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-two are in the amount of two seventy-nine eight twenty-five, to be cost shared in the amount of thirty-four thousand one hundred forty-seven dollars and sixty-eight cents, to be paid by Stormwater Management, and two hundred and forty-five thousand six hundred seventy-seven dollars and thirty-two cents, to be paid by Public Works. Public Works dues include a special condition fee for M P D E S permits per I E P A hyphen or slash E P A.
There's been a motion and a second, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Ozog.
Yes.
Pachowski, Renahan. Rutledge. Shorzy. Salmon. Tornatori. Zay. Chaplin. Chavez. Covert. Desart. Diciani. Eckhoff. Garcia. Hart. Kudjuski. Ann LaPlante. Thank you, Mr. Clerk, Member Ozog.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I next move for approval of W P W P zero-three-twenty-eight twenty-one, recommendation for the approval of a contract to Weatherproofing Technologies Incorporated for Roof Restoration at Various Public Works Facilities for the period August tenth, twenty-twenty-one, through June first, twenty-twenty-two, for a total contract amount not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand six hundred forty-eight dollars and fifty-one cents, contract pursuant to the Intergovernmental Cooperation Act, Omnia Partners.
Leave is granted, thank you, Member Ozog, a fine report. Onto the Order of Stormwater, Member Jim Zay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, move on S M R three-fifty-two twenty-one, recommendation for approval to grant authority to the Stormwater Management Department to provide limited services on privately owned drainage systems and structures.
Second. And a motion and a second, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Zay. Chaplin. Chavez. Covert. Desart. Diciani. Eckhoff. Garcia. Hart. Kudjuski. LaPlante. Ozog. Pachowski, Renahan. Rutledge. Shorzy. Salmon. Ann Tornatori. Thank you, uh, Mr. Clerk, uh, thank you for that fine report, Members Zay. Onto the Order of Technology, Member Ashley Salmon.
Thank you, Chairman.
Welcome back.
Thank you. I move on T E P three-two-two dash twenty-one, a recommendation for the approval of a contract to S H I International Corporation for the procurement of two hundred laptops and two hundred and thirty desk docking stations for a total two hundred and fifty-eight thousand three hundred and ninety-eight dollars and ninety cents per lowest responsible bid.
And a motion and a second, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Salmon.
Aye.
Tornatori. Zay. Chaplin. Chavez. Covert. Desart. Diciani. Eckhoff. Garcia. Hart. Kudjuski. LaPlante. Ozog. Pachowski, Renahan. Rutledge. Ann Shorzy. Okay, thank you, uh, Member Salmon, that concludes the technology report, we move on to the Order of Transportation, Member Don Pachowski, who's not here with us, will be, Member Ozog, she will carry the torch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, I would like to move to approve a change order, recommendation for the approval of an Amendment to Resolution D T P zero-two-seventy-nineteen, issued to Ciorba Group for the twenty-nineteen Bridge Inspection Contract, Section nineteen, B R D G E oh-seven E G, to increase the contract amount in the amount of forty thousand dollars, resulting in an amended contract total amount not to exceed one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, an increase of forty-two dollars and eleven percent, or, excuse me, forty-two, uh, point eleven percent, and to extend the contract until June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two.
A motion and a second, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Ozog.
Yes.
Pachowski, Renahan. Rutledge. Shorzy. Salmon. Tornatori. Zay. Chaplin. Chavez. Covert. Desart. Diciani. Eckhoff. Garcia. Hart. Kudjuski. Ann LaPlante. Okay, thank you very much, um, with that fine report, Member Ozog, in Mr. Member Pachowski's, uh, place, um, we move on to the next order of business, having concluded all our committee reports, we move on to the next order of business entitled Old Business, Things That Happened in the Past, Member Desart.
Oftentimes, we're trying to get through these meetings fairly quickly, so we're not asked for comment on each particular item, so I want to go back to item twelve A, the Corporate Lakes Rental of Office Space, and I just want to say thank you so much to Nick Katmeyer and staff, because when this was first brought before us, several of us were uncomfortable with the, um, length of time, we thought the contract was too long and too much money, so Nick and staff went back there and really worked on it, and thank you so much for your time and effort, and, and hearing the wishes of, of the board, and going back and getting her done. Um, the second thing I'd like to mention is that I am thankful for the, uh, DuPage County Health Department, we had our first very successful vaccination clinic in District Five in Aurora this past Sunday, and we're having a second vaccination clinic on Sunday the twenty-ninth, so they just sent out the most incredible staff, wonderful people, and a lot of people came by, every single person who came by this past Sunday, it was their first time shot, so I'm glad we're vaccinating in District Five. And then the third thing I'd like to discuss is, or just to mention, that we have a legislative committee at two o'clock today, and I know it's been a long morning already for everybody, but if you're on the legislative committee, we do need a quorum, we're going to approve two contracts, quick, quick, so it'll be like, you should be out by two oh five, so thank you, that's all.
Okay, very nice, thank you, uh, Mr. Zay was seeking recognition, followed by Member Rutledge, followed by Member Covert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, you know, I want to go back to public comment today, um, no, not what you're all thinking about, don't cringe, you know, Mrs. Rug comes every meeting, and she basically called me a liar today, you know, I know about the drain in her backyard, because when I went to her house, and we walked her property with staff and with another board member, she told me the drain that her grandfather had put in in the back, and when I drove her on I task and looked at other areas, so, again, uh, this is incorporated, we've done everything we can, I don't know what else I can do at this point, uh, the whole thing with the house, that's been asked and answered, that she's brought up with the chairman, so I really don't know what to do, but, uh, again, to be called a liar, I mean, I was there, she showed me the drain in her backyard as we walked the property, I'm not making things up, uh, again, she asked me, I drove her in my car around I task to look at other issues she had, so, again, we've done everything we can, we've had many meetings with her, uh, she's just very unhappy, and if I could do something honestly to change it and incorporate I task, we would, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zay, uh, Member Rutledge, followed by Member Covert.
Thank you, Chairman, um, I'm going to rise today because my comments, um, I think are very important, uh, I did have an environmental meeting in this last week, but we didn't have anything that would advance to County Board, but, um, we did have a discussion on, uh, some of our recyclables and things like that, um, but I'm rising today to, if you don't already know this, our landfills are filling up, our west coast is on fire, complete communities are being burned up, and from a personal note, I have a brother that's fifty miles away from that fire, he has a go-bag, he's cleared all he can from his lot, um, nobody should have to live like that. Yesterday, the U N came out with a three-thousand-page report from two hundred and thirty-four scientists saying warming is already accelerating sea rise, sea level rise, and worsening extremes, uh, such as heat waves, droughts, floods, and storms, all of these trends will get worse, the report said, uh, for example, the kind of heat wave that used to happen only once every fifty years, now happens once a decade, and if we don't do something, it's going to happen every seven years. Part of our discussion at our environmental committee last, last week was, I am asking in our budget to reduce the number six plastic that is not recyclable and lingers in our landfills for decades, centuries, um, and, and Mr. Pachowski was not here today, and I apologize for bringing him up without his presence, but he said that, uh, you know, we're asking for two hundred thousand dollars for that purpose, and that maybe we should wait until next year, uh, when our budget is a little more settled, and I asked him if he had a, a crystal ball for that, um, so, uh, I think that, uh, my question is, when will we get to the point where we start doing those little things that make our planet inhabitable for our children and our grandchildren and those to come after us? Uh, the other, uh, is kind of going to morph into new business a little bit, but, um, I'm also asking that, uh, we follow the example of Lake County and work on getting a single hall, single trash hauler franchise in the unincorporated areas, we have, um, neighborhoods in our unincorporated areas that have five trash days a week, every single day, they have their street lined with trash cans, and up to six different companies that are coming up and down those streets, so, um, one of those trash trucks, which in some of those neighborhoods, they have twelve a week, is worth, the emission from one of those trucks is the equivalent of seven thousand cars. So, I know that there is some question about government dictating, you know, what we do, but I think that this is an important initiative, and I'm going to ask for your support, I know that this is something that townships have jurisdiction over there, but I'm hoping that we find a way to make this happen, uh, without referendum, and to make these changes to our communities, so we start facing our children and our grandchildren and saying, yes, we're doing something about your environment that you're going in here one day, so, thank you for allowing my comments.
Thank you for offering your comments, anyone else seeking recognition, Member Covert?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, I was just going to, uh, ask a question, and to, I think this question might be appropriate for, uh, Greg Bedelov or, or Nick, but, um, I had a question on the ARPA funds, there's, um, I just wanted to know if there is some money being allocated to landowners, uh, landlords of apartment buildings and units, because if, you know, if tenants are not paying rent, then it would cause a foreclosure on landlords' units as well, so we need to protect both, and, and the tenants will suffer again, you know, if the apartment building or units are foreclosed on, so I just wanted to know if there's any money, um, being used. Mary, oh, I don't know who, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. Mary, are you on the line there?
Yes, I am, thank you for the question, Member Covert, yes, the county did receive two allocations of federal emergency rent assistance fu- rent assistance funding, um, that is the program that we are partnering with Ida on, um, as I mentioned in finance this morning, as of the middle of last week, um, uh, Ida has sent out checks for just under nine million dollars to DuPage landlords, and they're continuing to process through twelve-hundred applications, pending applications from, um, uh, from tenants, so we are moving that, uh, that money out into the community, we'll continue to partner with Ida, um, to get those funds out.
Okay, is this a loan program, or what's the nature of?
No, this is, this is, uh, the program pays back rent for tenants, pays the check to the landlord on behalf of the tenant, so the tenant and the landlord both have to apply, um, but the check is made out to the landlord, uh, for up to twenty-five thousand dollars in back rent.
Thank you.
Further discussion on the Order of Old Business, Mr. Diciani.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to, um, as many of you remember, uh, during the last legislative session, we had a lot of bills moving kind of quickly at the end with COVID especially, uh, but there were two House bills that this board, uh, along with our Chairwoman Desart, uh, on the Legislative Committee champion, House Bill Forty and House Bill twenty-seven forty-eight, those are two significant bills for kids with special needs, those bills allowed our special needs kids affected by COVID an extra year, you know, when, when you're a, a parent of a child with a special need, you have until age twenty-one, until that child turns twenty-two, um, with this bill, that, you know, especially with COVID, a lot of these kids were pretty much at home, uh, and they didn't get the services they would normally get, they didn't get life skills, they didn't get therapy, et cetera, so this bill gives them that extra year, so they could actually be, uh, stay until they're twenty-three, and then the other bill, uh, that was passed that was significant was a bill, uh, that would allow kids to continue the school year, even though, uh, they might turn twenty-two, uh, or twenty-three in this situation, uh, given, uh, the mid, uh, a mid-year birth date, so, again, you got a kid that might start, uh, transition, and it say is last year of transition, normally it's four years, and then if he's got a November birth date, or she has a November birth date, that, that service, uh, stops, this bill allowed, this legislation now, this law today, uh, signed by the governor, allows the, that those children to, to finish the full year, so, thank you, Member Desart, for championing those, we pushed those to your committee extremely quickly, and it took leadership, and I appreciate that, and we all supported it as a group, so it was a bipartisan effort, uh, but thank you again for your leadership, thank you.
Okay, very nice, uh, anyone else seeking recognition on the Order of Old Business, Old Business, seeing none, hearing none, we move on to the Order entitled New Business, anyone else looking forward, future, sun rising, Mr. Diciani?
On a, on a note of special needs, you know, if you remember, we were, uh, working on trying to get screenings for children with autism, a lot of our kids are poor in this, in this county, one in three are on Medicaid, and, um, often they're not diagnosed until age six, age seven, it's too late, we need to diagnose these kids and screen them by eighteen months, two years, three years old at the latest, um, so I had started , uh, working with our health department, uh, and, and trying to get our health department engaged in this process, and, uh, we were ready to go, and then COVID hit, and that kind of got, uh, put to the side, we've re, uh, reestablished those conversations, uh, with, uh, with the University of Illinois at, uh, Circle Campus, uh, the University of Chicago, I should say, and, uh, we are trying to hopefully, uh, get this back going, uh, you know, hopefully Delta doesn't mess us up again here, but we are continuing the efforts of hopefully being the first county to actually screen for autism in the state of Illinois, and I think that'd be wonderful, uh, I think our health department is up to the, to the, to the, um, uh, the challenge, and, um, uh, we've got good people on both sides, uh, of this issue, trying to, uh, make it happen, so I want to take, thank Karen Ayala for her leadership, and, um, also, uh, for, uh, Dr. Ann Cutler from Villa Park, she runs the University of Illinois Chicago Program, it's called L E N, and they actually will bring, uh, the education to our people here, so it costs us nothing, other than training, and, uh, and we can prepare our people to, uh, to make these observations and these screenings, and ultimately diagnose these kids and get them the help they need, so thank you.
Item to come before us, I'm sorry, oh. Hello, hello? Um, we do have an item to come before us, I believe it's on the Order of Pending Litigation, is that correct, so pursuant to Open Meetings Act Five, I L C S one-twenty slash two C eleven,